That's the proposed budget that I put in. Not a one. I have received comments and emails in support of the Board of Ed side of the budget. I think that's probably obvious based upon the amount of people that showed up at both here, particularly the first one. So with that being said, for $112 more a year, 30 cents a day, or $2.15 a week, the town of Stratford hums along great. Economic development is growing our grand list and commercial site, you all know this. We have some big projects that are out there, Army Engine Plant. Of course, the aircraft is staying, we're looking at doing a Main Street reconstruction up there. Two Rose Brewery is expanding here. These businesses want to see stability in our community. They don't want to see a political document that's just going to come out and slash and burn to get to zero just because you want to get to zero. I understand that you want to try to get as low as possible. The point is, the town is turning in the right direction. We are moving forward. Do we have a lot of challenges? Yes, we do. We're all part of that. But it's our responsibility as elected officials to make, to really be the guardians of our town, stewards for lack of a better term. But it's our job, it's incumbent upon us as elected officials, to do the right thing and govern for all, not just a certain few, but for all. So I look at it from the entire town. Where do I want to be? I'm going to be moving forward. I don't want to go backwards. When I first got elected, there was a race to go to the bottom in an election year. And when I won the election, I came in, and it was, you know, people got a tax cut. Guess what? We had a big tax increase and I had layoffs because we had a deficit. My concern right now is that we already know where some of the cost drivers are going to be, Stratford High School. We're going to have debt service. All right? So we already know that we're going to have some challenges next year. But the other challenge is revenues. Okay? We can always identify costs. What are we doing on the revenue side? I mean, there was one proposal, someone was talking about doing a part-time economic development director. That's the last place I'd go. If anything, you should be embracing it and shoring it up and supporting it because that's our future, is economic development, jobs, growing our tax base. And it is happening. Let's keep it going. Let's foster it. Let's support it. But more importantly, let's have a predictable tax policy in this town because people do want lower taxes. And it's something we're all striving for, but how are we going to get there? This budget, I believe, can get us there. It was a bipartisan effort, people were working together, they had to make some tough choices. And by the way, a compromise is when everyone leaves and they're entirely not happy with exactly what they're getting. Board of Ed wants more money. That's no secret. They already told us their proposal. This number actually gives them less, but keeps them whole. The problem we have is once the money goes down the street, as you know, they spend it and allocate it as they wish because they have a separate elected body. So as much as it may frustrate the council, how they operate, or what they do, what their priorities are, that's a Board of Ed job. And I would suggest or encourage you to run for the Board of Ed at some point if you so dare. Because I'll tell you what, I haven't and I'm not, but I give them a lot of credit for running for those offices because they have some tough decisions. They have even a tougher constituency called kids, and the parents that have those kids. They come here for the school system and they want to make sure they're going to have a good school system. And yes, it does impact real estate values. Talk to a Realtor, it's no secret, you know it. But also taxes are an issue. So in a perfect world, you have low taxes and a great school system. We're not there yet. We have a lot of work. But the reality is, we have improved municipal government, and we've done a pretty good job. I know when I leave, I'm leaving this town better off than when I got here. I just hope that you do the same. The one area we have to improve is education. So municipal services are running pretty good. Can they run better? Yes, they can. Are we going to continue to strive for that? I will until I leave. But we have an issue with education and we could do better there, and we have an obligation to question them, but also support them and try to help them. Mentor a student, that doesn't cost anything. You could actually volunteer and do that, get involved in organizations. So there's other ways than just finances. But my point is, when you vote on the budget, think about the entire town and the impact, but more importantly, think about the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Sir, any more discussion before we vote on this amendment?
Yes. I'd like to...
Ms. Netezo.
I'd like to comment on a few things. I calculated the Board of Ed budget based on using last year's Board of Ed budget. At 2.75, the increase will be $2,936,862. That's the increase. I do not support 2.75. I think it's far too high. I also observed at the top of the sheet I was given, the mill rate will decrease by .24. That's .24 off the mayor's 39.93, which brings it down to 39.69. It's still too high. And I have a question about several things. For instance, the railroad fund, I thought was something one could not touch. I may be wrong about that one. I have to have somebody answer that for me because it's, what do they call those?
Enterprise funds.
Yeah. Okay. I'm questioning the railroad fund, if you can take the money from that. The other thing I don't understand in the increase-decrease is to include the teachers' retirement of $902,000 because from my understanding is most of the cities who have been penalized for the teachers' retirement have revolted against this and they're abandoning it, so I don't even know why we're considering it because I think several cities are planning, either have or are planning to take the state to court over that situation. So that skews your budget out quite a bit. I only get deductions of a total of, if I add the other things excluding the teachers' retirement, I get a total of $428,936 reductions. And I don't think it's right to include the teachers' retirement in that to kind of conflate the figures. I wonder if somebody could give me information about the railroad fund and whether that money can be utilized or not as revenue.
Okay. The mayor would like to respond?
Councilwoman Netezo, the $902,000 is actually a deduction. We did scratch that off. That is not an addition, so we are not considering that amount. So we looked at that as a revenue pickup or less expenses.
I'm sorry. You said remove?
It's removed from the initial forecast and expenses, so we did remove that.
The 902?
Yes.
Okay.
So we did take care of that. I'd like to have Chris Timniak answer any questions regarding the railroad fund.
Mr. Timniak?
Yes. Thanks for the question. On page 70, you'll notice that the transfer for applied overhead is $250,000. That would be a revenue to the town. So if you turn to page 70, you can see the 250. And then if you turn to page 12...
Wait, wait, wait. I just got to 70.
All right. All right. So if you look at the applied overhead, it says $250,000. Okay? Now you turn to page 12, that 250 should be matching in the budget book. In the budget book, it was a typo, we call it later, it says 120 where it should say 250. So that's $130,000 correction. And that explains the railroad fund.
I still have a question. Okay, but you're not...
I have a question. I would like to ask Mr. Timniak this. For the applied overhead of $250,000, can you tell me how many people are involved in that? That you're applying the overhead on?
So I may have to call Mr. Wahlberg who crunched all the applied overhead numbers. And you did receive a full breakdown of how we came up to that $250,000 number.
No, I didn't. But anyway, that's okay. I'm actually looking at that previous page, page 69. The assistant to the mayor, I am sure, and the executive assistant to the mayor who are included in this, I would think that their benefits and so forth are covered by the mayor's office, not the railroad. So there are three people there, parking authority, there may be two guys, I don't know, 84th House, two guys?
So the individuals...
I don't know how you get $250,000 for applied overhead.
The individuals you mentioned have responsibilities tied to the railroad fund, so a percentage of that, of their salaries comes out of that fund.
That's taken care of on the earlier page, under expense, not under applied overhead. So you got the page?
I didn't... Do you have the breakdown for the applied overhead?
That's under regular payroll, not applied overhead.
I didn't indicate that it was, the employees come out of applied overhead. I indicated that they came out of railroad fund as your question led me to answer.
No, I still don't understand why it's $250,000.
Jay, do you have the breakdown of...
Yes, I do have it. I don't have it with me at this point in time. We went over that to all these enterprise funds and came up with a actual applied overhead figure. And I think I worked with Mr. Khan on these here, and we came up with an acceptable understanding and agreement on that. Now, the $250,000, I think it's in excess of our applied overhead, but I think there was other considerations encompassing that. There was some, I guess, some capital improvements over there at the railroad station that the town had to front, but...
I guess my problem is this. If there are four people, and I'm assuming even the people are working half-time, I'm counting four people. $250,000 equates to applied overhead of $62,000 a person. I think that's pretty high. And I'll tell you the reason I'm having a problem with this. We got this, I have the WPC, I'm the chair. When we got the applied overhead, it was twice as large as it should have been. It was like $944,000. And when we started looking at it and I started talking to individual department heads, I found out it was not near what they said on the list. But anyway, so that's why I'm questioning this one. You've got, as a matter of fact, the assistant to the mayor and executive assistant to the mayor are part-time, from what I gather. So I'm just assuming they're full-time. $62,000 a person, applied overhead, that seems to be very, very excessive to me. Anyway.
Okay. Is there any other, are there any other comments here?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Ferentzner.
Thank you.
Hi, Allison.
I appreciate all the work you four put into this budget. I did sit with, I know I did sit with the four of you, I believe, or three of you about a week or two ago. We sat over here and we spoke about the budget, so I was included in on that meeting. Otherwise, I was not included on pretty much any of the other meetings or any phone calls except one full call from Councilor DePonte. What I am noticing here is minimal cuts to this budget. But all the areas that I feel are padded, like anticipated expenses, outside services, stationary, printing, all those areas where the money is kind of hidden for that rainy day, or when you need to move it. And I notice all the increases from 17 to 18 in those line items. I need to ask you four, did you do this line by line? Because I don't see any cuts for any of those line items. Also, when we spoke over there, we talked about, which I know the public wants because they don't feel it's necessary, to have four full-time people in the registrar's office. And I believe there was an agreement there that, yes, the registrar's office needs to be cut. I don't see it. I also don't see any cuts to the mayor's office, which was something else that was talked about. So I'm going to ask you, what happened from a week or two ago when I sat there with you to now? Where are these cuts? And how come these line items are very few and we didn't go into all the areas where there was all increases put in for this year coming up? So through the chair, I want to ask the four people that worked on this, where are those cuts?
The cuts are in front of you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. The cuts are in front of you. They're listed expenditure lines 01101 through 01551. To ask your rhetorical question, of course we went through this line by line. You sat with us, we took your input, we took your majority leader's input. This is what we came up as our compromise. We too had a bipartisan group, Mr. Harden, Mr. Llewellyn, myself, and the chair, two Democrats, two Republicans. We all didn't get what we wanted. I know that you strongly feel about decimating certain departments, but this is what we had, this is what we agreed to.
Mr. Ferentzner, I'd like to respond to your question.
Okay, thank you.
Last year, we increased the mill rate and we did severe, major structural changes to the budget. And we had nine hearings, nine budget hearings. I know I was at each and every one of those. This year, there was a very different process that was chosen. The process was to send the budget to ordinance and then we would work things out in the ordinance committee. And that's fine. I had, there were personal issues going on in my life at the time, and that actually worked on my side at that point. You had come out, but what I learned last year, and if we can stop texting a little, but what I learned last year was having, and you had come out very publicly and said that you could not support any mill increase. I'm very sympathetic with that. I really am, and I would love to be able to do or say the same. I've never said that, even though people have accused me of saying that last year. But I also know how unrealistic that is, given that we have increased, that we're doing, have increased debt, that we now have the Stratford High debt. The first time ever in this budget, we have new Stratford High debt, which is $700,000. We approved a teacher's contract, which was going to have cost implications. We approved another contract this year also. Staff has contracted increases. So although I would have loved to have zero mill increase, I knew that we could not get there. So when somebody comes out and says that they are not going to vote for anything other than zero increase, and I know how unrealistic that is, or, you know, that they sign a petition that says, "I'm going to have zero increase to the Board of Ed," when the Board of Ed has had, you know, very serious increases that are built in, it's, you know, it gets exhausting in terms of how many compromises to make if a person isn't going to vote for the budget anyway. So that's my honest answer to you. But I wish that, I truly hope that you can, you know, I still think that we are on such a great path in terms of oversight. The financial advisory committees, recommendations that we accepted and acted on tonight are excellent, and I think that we need to continue to tighten our belt. And I do think that evidence of our belt tightening is that we are able to get a budget presented to the rest of the council that is well below the rate of inflation. So...
Madam Chairman.
But it does represent a tax increase, and that's inflationary.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to call for a five-minute recess.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of taking a five-minute recess, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. There's, Chase said, Mr. Chase, Mr. Harden, and I say no. But it passes 723. So we will take a five-minute recess, five minutes exactly. Thank you. This has ended.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Point of personal privilege?
Wait.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, girl.
Okay, we have council clerk. Ow, ow!
Pass it down. Pass it down here.
What are we doing?
Pass it down. Three.
How long?
One more.
Okay, we're all present.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Point of personal privilege?
Yes, Mr. Chase.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I find it entirely inappropriate for the mayoral candidate and Democratic town chairman to be working in the council's office. Talk about putting politics into an already difficult situation. If we had a sergeant-at-arms, I'd ask you to remove, have it removed from there, but we don't.
We do not. Right now? Let's get through this. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It was seconded and we were in the middle of discussion. Is there any more discussion? Mr. Young?
Yeah, I've kind of kept quiet about this for a little while. I don't have my computer with me either, so I can't look up a few things. Mr. Chase, you keep referring to how we did not, I did not try to schedule any meetings in ordinance and different things. I'll dig up those emails for you that I sent out to every council person suggesting different times and different days we could have these meetings and giving you options for the weekends or nights for other days that I was off. So to say I gave no opportunity, and you know what? Nobody responded.
That's not true. I'll show you my email. I told you I'd be available any day you wanted me.
Mr. Young has the floor.
You're one of eight, or two of eight, two of 10 who responded to me.
Well, then direct your comment to someone else.
Well, you're the one who keeps accusing me.
Well, you didn't do it.
Okay, Mr. Young has the floor.
So, let's set that one straight, number one, because nobody got, nobody got in touch with me. It was like herding a bunch of cats around here to get together for this meeting and doing it at all. So I really don't appreciate the insinuation that I didn't try to do my job.
He didn't.
Okay, Mr. Young has the floor, please.
And Beth, I mean, as much as I agree with you, we made some tough decisions last year and really, you know, it shook me to my core to try to do that, to see that we could do some stuff. But what structural things did we really do? We threw money at them, okay? You talk about the pensions that we're paying off and stuff like that. Well, that was 2013. We had nothing to do with it. We're paying it off, but we didn't make that structural change. So I'm just, I look at it and I go, you know, yeah, there have been some changes. I think Mr. Timniak is doing a great job. I think Mr. Wahlberg is doing a great job. They've really done, you know, some good things in terms of trimming things down and making some more things more efficient. Are there more things we can do? Yes, there are. But the bottom line is, we threw money at stuff to cover it up, to get rid of some of the things that we had that were going wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? It did need to be done. I understood that.
It did.
Okay? So, but when I look at it this year, I'm sorry, I cannot support a 2.5% raise in the Board of Education. I just cannot do it. Not after getting 6.75 last year. 2.75, sorry. I just, I can't do it in my right being and body, just can't do it again this year. Okay? You say that we were all invited to these sessions that you had with the budget and Vince and Transparency? I went to the one last Saturday. That was the first one I was invited to. So please don't tell me this bipartisan group put this thing together with anything. The majority leader wasn't there and wasn't invited. So let's set the, let's get things straight here. When people say, "Oh, this is all American Pie and we all did this nice job." So I don't understand it. Look, Mr. Harkins, I do believe you put out a good budget. I do, and I appreciated it. But I think it does need to have a few things tightened up in it. And I really would like to see it as close to a small amount, if we have to increase it, a very small amount, that's one thing. Okay? But when I look at what's been done, that kind of thing, there are, there are savings that can be found here. And I hate that it's 11 o'clock on the night of the council meeting, but that's where we are right now. So.
Okay, Mr. Chase?
Yeah, I think we need to respond to some of that nonsense. First of all, first of all, Mr. Young, you are the chairman of the ordinance committee and you are the majority leader. I called you and gave you the courtesy as the majority leader for the other side to sit down with us. You came, and I'm glad you did. All right. Secondly, you're the chairman of the ordinance committee. It was very kind of you to sit there and ask us what we wanted. It's not my fault that only a couple of people responded to you, but it was your responsibility to call those meetings anyway, hold budget workshops. So at least the public had the opportunity to sit down and listen to what the department heads had to say and the questions we were asking them. But you never did that. So enough said. I just want to comment about the budget workshops, Madam Chair. Last year, I went to everything but one budget workshop. There were a number of them. And after every single head of a department came in, except for police, we asked them, "Is there anything you can cut from your budget?" And they all said, "No." So I didn't see any point of doing it over again.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on what was proposed? Yes, Ms. Manis?
I was one of the people when I was asked about the budget, and I said I thought that Mayor Harkins did a good job this year. And again, I think Mr. Wahlberg was a fabulous addition. I said that, and I said it to a number of people. But we all have to work with folks, right? And that's what we have to do, and I understand that, too. My biggest comment on it, and you know, you could have done nothing, really. You're leaving. You made that announcement before the budget. So I admire that, that you actually put together a really decent budget. I think that that's pretty good. And the fact that you negotiated the Board of Ed knowing, and I know you know, because you know finance, you know what's going on. And I could see it in your eyes when you talk about the money that's being spent, you don't have, what's going on in the overhead. The fact that you would negotiate up on that number, and I get, they have to work with other people, so I get it. But I would have liked you to hold the line on that number because I think that that was restraint that you showed based on the data that you had. And I saw, I see you in here, I see your priorities and your values. Yes, some of those things might adjust with people who are working on stuff, but that one negotiation, I was even talking to Mr. Timniak about it, it just, it doesn't sit well with me. And I'm going to put my number out there. My number is 1.2 for the Board of Education. As an educator, I feel that that's the fair amount. And I feel that that will keep our schools afloat, and I feel that it is the parents' responsibility to activate and make sure that their kids are getting everything they deserve. We cannot pay to be parents for government doesn't... Thank you. Government is not the parent of children. We've got to make people come out. So many teachers came out, so many kids came out, and that's what they're supposed to do. But now it's up to the parents to come, and they're waiting. They're waiting in the wings for that opportunity for the values of the BOE to come clear. And it's the only way I know how. We've got to be truthful with how much money we make, and we've got to go 50/50. I was hoping to get a 50/50 even split, and I was looking at just a little bit more on the town side to keep our blight officer. Honestly, that was my hope, that we could go 50/50. And I thought that that was fair, and it was balanced, and it was a good plan, and it would... it would have activated parents in a way that I'm just, I'm longing for them to be out, for their kids. They need to take control of the Board of Education. They need to know their vote counts. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manis. And you know, the one thing about doing this is it's, you know, you have to look at the big picture. You have to look at everything. And you mentioned the blight officer, you're right. I mean, keeping our town clean is important. There's priorities here that you make, and we invested heavily in the Board of Ed last year, it's no secret. What I'm hearing is we're starting to see those results, and there has to be accountability. With the 2.75, and I give the council credit for coming out with this, because they actually lowered my proposed mill rate. They were able to fund the Board of Ed a little bit more and yet find more savings. And we also realized some savings through some pickups over the last month. That's no secret, it's here before you. But the important thing is not to do a hard municipal side, because I think we're comfortable with what we're doing. I mean, we added an ice skating rink. We spent money on that. We want to do a dog park. I mean, these are the priorities of the council, so they do want to do more, which requires more effort on the municipal side. That's fine if that's what you want to do as a body, but it requires more effort by us. So in other words, we're always trying to do more. I know we always, there's talk about a water park in the South End, and well, I know your predecessor wanted that, and it's still an issue. But again, more spending. Keep spending, right? Keep maintaining more, because you want to do more, but no one talks about the revenue side. And I'll be interested to see the capital plan, because that includes spending. And you have to invest in your community, and I get that. And that's a, that is a, that is not my cellphone. I will not take a, but I, the thing about the proposed ordinance in front of us, it is responsible. It's, it's, for an average home at 230,000, at a value of 230,000, you're looking at an annual tax increase of $112 a year to keep everything. That's everything the way it's running right now. And yes, you should hold the Board of Ed accountable. And I perhaps think we might have some members here that might be running for the Board of Ed at some point, to go down there and see what they could do to, to find out what the operation is there. That's not, we can only do so much here. And you, as an educator, might have a little bit more insight than others here, but they're doing the best they can, the council is, and they always have. I give you a lot of credit for doing what you have to do. This amendment before us accomplishes everything that you've committed in the past and want to, want to do in the future. And I think the, the one thing that people aren't talking enough about is the future, next year. You're right, I'm not going to be here. But I'm not going to take a powder and say I'm not going to care anymore. It's not me. But if we're going to have a little difference in the Board of Ed, if that's the priority of this council and other members, I respect that. But a slash-and-burn tactic, where just to race to zero, just to say zero, I get that, too. And if that's important to you, that's fine, because if you promise that. But how is that helping the town? So if I'm getting less and paying the same amount of taxes, how is that benefiting anybody? For my reelection? That doesn't make me feel good. Makes you feel sad and bad. Like, what's the plan? What's the vision? What's the agenda? Where do you guys want to go? What do you see in two, five years? I don't want to go backwards, I want to go forwards. I think we all do. That's why you took the time and effort to run for office. This amendment does that. Is the Board of Ed higher than, number higher than what I propose? Yeah, a little bit. But they, that was a priority for the members, and you know what? They made it up on the cost side. They actually lowered the mill rate down. It's all about debate, discussion, more importantly, coming up with an agreement. Is everyone happy at the end of the day? No, they never are. This gets us pretty darn close, and I think it's pretty reasonable. And thank you, Councilman Young. When you came in, you covered me on the budget. This is pretty darn close. But you're not happy in the Board of Ed side. I get that. But there's more good in here than that. So it's, it's all about the give and take, but there's a lot of good in here. And it accomplishes a lot to what I think what your hard work has done in the past. It gets us into the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Farrington Posner.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor Harkins. But I do want to point something out. You said that this proposal lowers the mill rate.
Lowers my proposed.
It lowers your proposed mill rate, but when a mill rate hasn't been set, it doesn't actually lower the current mill rate. It actually increases it. And that's something that needs to be said out loud to everybody. This proposal increases our current mill rate, that's at 38.99. So it doesn't lower any mill rates, because nothing has been set yet.
If I stand corrected, it lowers my proposed initial mill rate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Khan. Sorry, you had your hand up to discuss?
Thank you, Chair. Composed thoughts? The, this, there's two things that are not addressed.
Could you use your mic, please?
Two items are not addressed in the current budget proposal. I'm going, Mayor, you were not here earlier when I spoke about the WPCA. That, you know, we say $100 here, $100 there, but the WPCA rate holders have been overcharged about $100 a year for the past six years, based on the overhead charges that were given to them, the exaggerated pension charges that were given to them, the withdrawals from the sewer, revolving fund, et cetera.
That's not true, but go ahead. I'll comment when you're through.
Yeah. So today's budget is another $1 million, taken from the WPCA to balance the general fund, or to keep your increase at about a mil. Now, that's $1 million that belongs to the WPCA. It's money that should be used to capitalize the WPCA's investments. So the WPCA is going to be at a point where it's diluted, just like our debt relief funds diluted, or our railroad fund is diluted, or the EMS fund is diluted. All of the savings accounts that could be used for the strategic growth of the town have been diluted, so that there's really no more cash reserves left. And I keep hearing about our bonds rating is under threat for that very reason. So one of the restructuring items that would really please the 92% of the homeowners in town is that they, they're not punished for being part of the WPCA. 8% of the people, 8% of the families in town are not paying that extra $100 surcharge that has been compounding year after year. And it's time to restructure and to recognize that paying, spending down ratepayer money to pay tax obligations is a regressive tax. It's a punishment to the low-income people who cannot spread it across so much of their take-home pay, like someone who's more affluent can. It doesn't matter your family income. You're paying more on WPCA to, quote, falsely keep the taxes low. So that's something that's not addressed. It's something that I've been very advocating about since prior to my election. I was hoping that when you presented the budget, that it would have been addressed. But since your budget came out, I've been working, you know, with your administration to try and get it addressed. And that's what my current proposal, our current proposal, an alternative proposal, that's one of the items that it's going to do, is say, you're not taking that extra $1 million of unsubstantiated money out of the WPCA and using it to balance the town budget. You're going to use it to pay capital improvements for the WPCA like it was always intended. Second item is the Board of Ed. They're getting, under this proposal, a 1.2% increase. This alternative proposal, which we haven't discussed yet, is...
I'm sorry, 2.75% increase under this proposal, right?
Oh, I apologize. The one that we have not discussed yet. There's, you have a 2.75 increase in front of you. What you need is a 1.2% increase to fund all the increased teacher salaries. That 1.2% will fund the teachers and the principals, their contracted salaries, and that will remove any argument that you have to lay off, teachers or principals or CIA's or classroom folks. With, we went through an exercise with the BOE, there were, a lot of energy went into finding non-resident students. Why would we have done that? The objective was, we shouldn't be incurring variable costs for students that don't belong to Stratford. We've reduced variable costs in Stratford by 400 students, because that's the reduced census from the last couple of years. But there's no recognition, that's a 6% reduction, 6% fewer bathroom trips, 6% more time a teacher can spend with the students that are remaining in her class or his class. So there's so many opportunities to say the Board of Ed can be more efficient than their currently constructed budget. And we can recognize those opportunities immediately. They don't have to initiate a program to bring students in from out of district. They don't have to renegotiate a contract with any of the unions in the Board of Ed. They can just simply say, those cost savings are realized because it's an economic fact that fewer students, reduced variable costs. So our denial of that, or our choice not to incorporate that into our budget discussions is very frustrating to me, and I think it would be to anyone who's trying to run a household in town. So those are my two items in terms of the budget that's in front of us. Those are the two adjustments, both of them significant, that I would have expected to see in any budget proposal that was brought before the council for a vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, most of you said I have no idea what you're talking about. However, the one area that you talked about, the applied overhead, we're actually undercharging. I believe you had an audit done, that your WPCA had an audit done.
It wasn't in regards to applied overhead.
Actually, that we should be charging the WPCA another $1 million. It's actually more than what's even proposed in my budget. I mean, there are expenses associated that the town incurs on behalf of WPCA. Mr. Timniak, do you wish to address this at all? Because this came up in discussions, and I know you guys love talking about WPCA. You love talking about it. So we'll talk about it a little bit, but my understanding is the audit that you guys got actually said we should be, you should be billing more money at the WPCA.
We did talk about that. The audit indicated that there was a 1.9 number in there. He came here, he spoke in front of this council, he said, this is Michael Maker from the firm in Baltimore, he said that we, the town was actually undercharging the WPCA. I spoke to you specifically, I mentioned in jest, like, we should get a, we should have, he said it several times, we should get a beer and we should go over how two people read an audit differently. Remember that conversation I had with you? Because there were things I was seeing in the audit which you weren't seeing in the audit, and there are obviously areas of that. And Michael Maker would be the first to admit that it wasn't an audit, it was a report, which I also found fascinating, too, because we've always referred to it as an audit, and the guy we hired referred to it as a report. Right.
The, I just want to...
Okay, I'm sorry, one at a time. Mr. Khan has the floor.
May I answer?
Thank you.
Mr. Khan has the floor.
May I answer?
Mr. Khan has the floor.
Thank you, Mitzi, just a moment. That audit had a lot of factual errors in it, because the information it gathered was just incorrect. The organizational charts correct. Some of the financial data was correct. Some of the maintenance figures were correct, because the individuals who are giving them the information were not giving them current information. So that discounts some of the value of the conclusions that may have been written in that initial release of the report.
Did you ask for a refund or any sort of proposal based upon it factual?
Did I ask? No, but don't change, let's not change the subject, so.
Yeah. If the value of the report isn't worth what it's written on...
Not entirely, not written, it's very directionally valuable, and it addressed dozens of different things, which, as the WPCA committee, we're going to work on. And we've already started, such as improving the maintenance of the facility and not letting, you know, squeaky wheels not get the grease. But we, we sat down, Chris, since November, working on this allocation of overhead.
And we did that.
Yes.
And it was adjusted, and a new number was put in the mayor's budget, proposed budget, based upon the work you and I did, right? You just don't agree with the number.
Well...
And I, we ran that number by, right?
Sure. Because I don't think the town attorney's office spends 30% of their time in a normal year working on WPCA. So I will say, in a normal year, maybe they spend 5% of their time. And I don't say that the tax assessors are spending 20% of their time assessing WPCA.
And that's a fair opinion.
But it's, it's...
The opinion of the guys who did the report was the contrary to what you're talking about today, but as you pointed out, the report wasn't worth the paper it was printed.
No, what I'd like to refocus on, the report, and none of us have it in front of us, but its reason for increasing fees paid by the ratepayers was to fund capital improvements, not necessarily to pay more money back to the town. I don't recall the report saying the town deserved more money over and above the $1 million it's already getting, in addition.
It actually, it actually used the sentence that it, we should slowly get it to the right number. We should slowly, sort of matriculate up to where it should be. We shouldn't hit the WPCA with a big number off the bat, but we should gradually increase to get to the number. But can I...
Can I yield to Mitzi?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Oh. Chris.
Yes.
I believe the report said that the WPCA should be charging higher rates. That's what I got out of it. However, we shouldn't be talking about the WPCA mainly because, A, there is a motion on the floor to adopt the First Amendment that was put forward, which would result in a decrease by .24 mils, which would bring it down to 39.69. And also, as I pointed out before, would result in a $2,936,862 increase in the Board of Education, which I thought was high. And so I really don't want to talk about the WPCA again.
Okay, the floor goes back to Mr. Khan, since Mr. Khan yielded the floor to Ms. Antezo.
Thank you, Chris. I'm done.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
We get sick of talking about it.
Call the question.
Okay, there was a motion to call the question in a second.
Second.
There was already a second. It was seconded by Mr. Chase. The motion was made by Ms. Manis. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion, that motion passes 10 to zero. Now we're going to vote on the question. The question is the, it's essentially the mayor's proposed budget with the amendment as, as proposed by Mr. Chase, seconded by Mr. Harden.
Roll call. Actually, you're voting on just the amendment.
Oh, right, we're voting on, well, it's the amendment to the mayor's proposed budget. Right, exactly.
Roll call, please.
Okay, of course, we're doing a roll call vote. Mr. Farrington Posner.
No.
No. Yes. No.
Mr. Khan?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
And the chair votes yes. The motion fails 6 to 4. Okay? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, I'm sorry, is there a motion to recess until?
No, no, we, no, no, we have, we have another amendment.
We have another amendment here. Nice try.
Nice try, nothing. Madam Chairman, we just got this new amendment. There are 80 line items here.
We just got ours, too.
We haven't gone it. We sent yours.
I'd like to make a motion to follow.
This morning.
Get some order here.
This morning, same day.
We're recessing for 15 minutes.
Same day, gotcha.
Who voted?
Doesn't want to lower your taxes.
Your seats. Okay, so where we were at is the...
Madam Chair.
Chase DePonte, I'm just, one second.
I'm sorry.
Chase DePonte, Harden and Llewellyn amendment got voted down. So now, Mr. Kadim.
I had a question. With all that's going on, do we need to recess to pick this up another night? Because with all, all the confusion from here to there, you know, it hasn't, honestly speaking, just my overview, you guys did a great job, respect to that. Mr. Khan did a great job, with all the other people sat and did everything they needed to do, but it seemed like some things was missing, embedded, it wasn't embedded properly. So that's something to think about. Y'all do what y'all want.
I'm sorry, can you be clear? What was embedded properly?
Well, you look at, you look at the bonding for the police.
I'm sorry, are you talking about this?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
No, I'm talking about Mr. Khan's paperwork.
Okay.
That takes away the police cars, that we are still leasing, that takes away the dump trucks, that we are still leasing. And it takes away the crossing guards that cross our children to school every day. So we really need to look at this a little more.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Harden?
Yes, I want to follow what Wally said. We were just given this, and again, you know, some of the numbers don't add up. And when you talk about dismantling public safety in this town, you know, people who use the ambulance service, people who use the police department services, and all the other services that will be affected by this, this really doesn't sit well with me. These are people who dedicate their lives, who continue to work so that we may live and be safe. And you're telling us that you want to dismember them, pretty much take money from these organizations. I'm not satisfied with that, and I'm not happy. Show me a plan that you really sat down and thought about, versus going into the office and quickly putting it together with all even numbers and no odd numbers, and, you know, and I'm just not, I'm not satisfied with this being put in front of me.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Antezo.
Oh, I would like to recommend that we adjourn until Wednesday night.
I'm sorry, adjourn, and...
Adjourn this meeting.
Can we, would we, are you suggesting that we recess?
Recess.
Recess until Wednesday night?
No. Adjourn, and meet Wednesday. No, we don't have to propose a meeting.
Special meeting.
We're such children at this, John.
Madam Chairman?
Wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Flora?
We speak in terms of recess, to keep it the same meeting, but technically, the term is to adjourn to a date certain, it's still the same meeting, it's not a new meeting, if you do that.
So we would be adjourning to a date certain, right now?
That's what, that's what Mitzi is suggesting, but that, that would be the verbiage, to adjourn to Wednesday.
Can I just ask a clarification question? That would be, that would be a continuation of this meeting, or I have...
That meeting would, would continue where we left off at this meeting, at the date that you've adjourned it to. So if it's Wednesday evening at whatever o'clock, we begin that meeting right where we left off at this meeting, and continue with this meeting.
Because I've set up special meetings for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, just in case.
Well, you noticed this, so you...
But those were set up as new meetings.
So you, I saw that a notice went out of special meetings, but you can, you don't have to have those special meetings, that you've noticed. You can cancel any special meeting.
Yes, I understand. Yeah.
If it's continued.
Okay.
Right. Is there a second? Madam Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Before we adjourn to a date certain, I'd like to get an opinion from the town attorneys, not this evening, but when we come back on Wednesday, whether this amendment is in actuality a rewrite of the whole budget, and as such, would it, would it then need to be posted to allow for public comment?
And I think it should be clear as to what you're talking about as this amendment, because there is no amendment before the body right now.
Right. So should we recognize, I'm sorry, there was a motion, you made a motion to adjourn to a date certain.
There was no second.
There was no second, okay.
Was there a second? We were still...
The second was withdrawn? Okay.
Excuse me. So what was the attorney's?
I was letting him speak, because I didn't know he was, wanted to know what's going on.
The attorney, I'm sorry, Brian, the question was, do they need to write a whole new budget? Is this, is this, and your response was that there is no amendment on the floor, so somebody would need to make an emotion to put this amendment on the floor.
Well, no, no, if you want us to look at something, if you want me to look at, if you want to look at what's called budget amendments, someone handed us budget amendments, 2017, 18 budget for ordinance 5717, final send 2-1. Page 1 of 3, 2 of 3, and 3 of 3. If that's what you're talking about, we could look at that.
Yes.
Is that the right document? I don't know if these are versions of things.
I don't know what's 20 now.
The one we have at the bottom has a footer that says, for ordinance 5717, final send 2 per n1.
That's it, that's the amendment.
That's the one.
Okay.
But it looks, I mean, it just looks like it's an amendment. Well, let me ask, let me say this. This document, it looks to be some kind of a spreadsheet with comments all over it. You have a motion before the body now to adopt an ordinance. Your budget in this town, as you know, is an ordinance, and you have an item before you that's been moved and seconded, an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget. And that specific ordinance incorporates the budget attached here to and made a part here of by the mayor and the administration, which was submitted. There was an amendment that just failed. I don't think it's proper to take this document labeled ordinance 5717, final send 2-1. This document cannot in and of itself be an amendment, because it has captions, it has comments, and boxes, it has arrows. I think that if someone wants to amend the ordinance before the body right now, this specific motion has to be made with adds or deletes to the budget as submitted by the mayor, not just this sheet.
Mm-hmm.
So someone could take the items on this sheet, just as, just as Mr. Chase and Mr. Llewellyn did, and specifically reference ice doc, right, item numbers, right. That's how it has to be done.
Madam Chair?
That's your question.
Okay, Mr. Leclerc, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
No, the only other thing is if you're going to have a motion to adjourn this to a date certain, I think you need a time in the motion as well.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Manis?
I think one thing we can all agree on is that the reconciliation of the WPCA piece needs to happen. And if it doesn't happen, what a disappointment. And I want to say something very clearly. When you start reconciling WPCA, you realize that the $220 million that the mayor had for his expenditures and revenue line item is incorrect. It's more like 216. When you do all of these changes, it becomes the number 216. You divide 216 in half, it's 108, 108, 10844, actually, on the town side, 108. And it becomes a whole lot less. So everybody needs to be clear what the numbers are. It becomes a 1% Board of Ed budget, and about, if you want to keep things, unless you want to cut up the town, it's almost 2.5, I think, on the town side, or they're around. If you're looking at the budget, and I know it down to the pennies, I'm telling you that that's how it's going to be. You can go low, and you can stay even, and the only way to stay even is a point, I think it's a .5 and a 1% Board of Ed, that's where it balances. Anything other than that, the imbalances start to come, either the town eats the Board of Ed, or the other way around. So when you're doing your budget calculations tonight, and you're thinking about that, really think carefully, how much of the town side do you want to massacre in order to make the Board of Ed whole? If, if mill rate is a concern. If mill rate is not a concern for you, and you're okay with raising the mill rate a lot, because even when you move those numbers a little bit, the mill rate goes up a lot. So I've played with these numbers, I'm not lying to you, and we have been doing this wrong. I think tonight, we should try to reconcile the WPCA here as a body right now, and get our numbers straight, so everybody goes home with the proper revenue line. This amendment was built on the wrong revenue. Our amendment had issues, but guess what? It's because it was built on the proper revenue. We don't have it. The town has been living in fiction. And I appreciate everything everyone has done to try and make it and isolate us, but things aren't getting better. Since 2008, we've been trying to stay afloat, and we have to hit reality. 216 is the number, as I see it. What do we want to do with 216? Do we want to raise a mill rate so we can get more, or do we want to restructure? In 1995, they wanted to close, 1996, they wanted to close Firehouse Number 2. They've wanted to close a school for years. This is what we're facing next year and the year after, if we don't get our house in order now. I'm begging you to get it together, somehow. We have to figure it out. Please work together, please. I'm willing to sit with anybody, let's work together. Somewhere in between those two budgets is the budget, guys. It's here. Please, let's just do it, get it together. But let's do WPCA, let's get these general fund expenditures done right. Please, before we leave here tonight, can we please just stop stealing from ourselves and lying?
Is there a motion to adjourn until Wednesday at 7:00 PM?
Second.
7:30 PM.
Make a...
It's already booked, 7:30? Okay.
No, 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 we need to, what was?
7:30. At the library, Stratford Library.
But that's booked as a special council meeting, not a, not a continuation of this one. Okay, so we'll need to just re-notice. So is there a motion to, to adjourn until Wednesday, 7:30 at Stratford High?
So moved. Second.
Okay. It's in the Stratford High Library, because there were no other rooms available?
There's no room.
It was seconded by Chase?
Chase. For clarification, we're going to meet at the Stratford Library?
Stratford High School Library, unless, we have a... This room was not available. There are other meetings.
Who's meeting here?
Was it zoning?
The council doesn't have the authority to bump whoever's in this room for a special meeting.
Wait a minute, I thought that we had to be filmed. Who's meeting here?
Waterfront, maybe?
What? The Arts Commission?
No, no, no.
They can meet in the library.
It was an Arts Commission. We will announce the room, we will try to jiggle what we can, but it's a motion to adjourn until Wednesday at 7:30 PM. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes 8 to 2.